I would like to call this special meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Committee members, Bowers, Sox.
Yes, here.
Garrett.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Marlin.
Roberts.
Here.
Smythe.
Here.
Chair Stevenson.
Present.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
I have Jim Kelly for petitions and communications.
So if you're last on the agenda, do you get what you want, just like that? No? My name's Jim Kelly. I'm co-owner of Bunny's Tavern at 119 West Water Street in Urbana. Bunny's has, with the approval of the city of Urbana, had many special events out in the parking lot on Lot Two next to adjoining the Bunny's Tavern. For years, we've brought people to downtown under the special event permit. The current language of the T-1 liquor license was interpreted by city staff to not include consuming on the right-of-way, but to serve on the right-of-way. Obviously, that's a concern with the city now. City Attorney has given you an amendment to the ordinance that specifies that the consumption of that should include a T-1 liquor license. That's fine with me. If you want to have another liquor license for Bunny's to get with the special event permit, however, I suggest that we keep it as it was in the past, and that is no cost to Bunny's Tavern and no limit for those amount of events that they can have. Currently, we have had up to eight in one year. I know the mayor's been gracious in wanting to put two in 10, and I just want to be clear is that prior to this change in the T-1 license from selling to consume, we had no restrictions and no costs.
Could I please comment on that?
Mayor Pressing?
Yeah, I'm the liquor commissioner, and we do have an ordinance, and the only reason that we're talking about defining, we're taking that out actually, is because of your concern. I mean, you were administering the program and somehow made a decision that a T-1 license did not apply to your situation, but our legal advice is that that is incorrect, and we'd like to make sure that people understand how to do this. So that's why we're asking that the changes be made here, and to accommodate you, and since you've always had many events, the T-1 license had been restricted to three a year, and so we're changing it to, we would like to change it to 10. But we've had on the books a long time that the T-1 license has a fee, and it's been in an ordinance, a separate ordinance, and I think it's unfortunate that it was interpreted by you in that fashion, but as far as I can see from the legal department and all the attorneys that were involved in this, that that was never the intention, because your license only covers the specific boundaries of your establishment. And once you add an additional part, that is a separate license, and it would be like, we charge the Sweet Corn Festival for a liquor license for that event, and I think it was a mistake that you didn't pay this all these years. We're not asking you to repay it, okay? We just want to get right and move forward and follow the ordinance. There's a corrected version here.
Mayor, it's clear that...
I'm just giving my speech here.
Okay.
There's a corrected version, and perhaps the city attorney would want to comment on why this has been revised from what we handed out at the previous committee meeting.
We discussed this issue. Part of what you saw in the original amendment that was submitted to this council was including an expanded definition of "serve," what it means to serve. Now, I gave it its plain sense meaning. It's a maxim of statutory construction that you give words in a statute. It's plain sense meaning, but Mr. Kelly brought up the issue that there was some, I don't know what the word is, Jim, it could be confusion or disagreement as to what it meant to serve something. If I understand his concern correctly, he's reading that to mean that serve means inside the building where you actually hand the drink to the person and accept payment for it. If you read the T-1 section, though, and give it that meaning, that means that no one would ever want to get a T-1. They'll say, hey, I'm going to make you pay for the drink right inside the door, and then you can walk right outside the door into a publicly-owned parking lot, the city's parking lot, and we don't have to get a license. If I step outside the door, or if a waitress were to step outside the door and take your money and give you a drink, then you would have to get a T-1 license. Obviously, that's a nonsensical interpretation of the words "serve." It wouldn't mean anything. That T-1 license would be useless at that point. The idea is to try to control what is happening off of the licensed premises, particularly as it pertains to public property, our parking lot. So in order to try to clarify that, I gave the definition of "serve." I wasn't here that night. I was out of town. It was explained to me when I returned that some had some concerns about the definition of "serve." So in talking with Kurt Borman, we determined that maybe we should just move away from the word "serve" altogether and go with the word "selling for consumption," because then that makes it clear that we're saying, doesn't matter where you're drinking it, where you take your drink, if you sell it for consumption in this adjoining property or to be consumed in this adjoining property, whether or not you paid for it indoors or out of doors, it would require a T-1 license. So that is why, on the new submission that you have, we've struck the whole definition, that whole Section 1 where we define "serve," and if you go in, we put the word "sell alcoholic drinks for consumption" in an enclosed area without regard to where payment is made, immediately adjacent and adjoining and opening onto the premises described. So that was the reasoning behind it.
Sorry, Brandon, go ahead.
One quick question, maybe for Ron or Laurel, if you remember the answer, either of you. For comparison's sake, when Crane Alley or Iron Post sells alcohol and then serves in their sidewalk cafe permit area, either in Crane Alley, the alley, or in the little public plaza at the corner, do they do that solely on the basis of their Class A liquor license and their sidewalk cafe permit, or is there also a license, and do we remember the cost, for their year-round operation?
They have a sidewalk cafe permit. That's what they're doing. But special events have many more people than an ordinary clientele for a sidewalk cafe. And I have, I forgot to bring the list with me, but we have a list of all the, okay.
I have it right here.
My attorney has it.
That is a Class BW.
Okay.
And it's in Section 33-41(c)(2), and it says, "That license shall permit the retail sale of alcoholic liquor by any person holding a Class A," so if you hold a Class A, Double A, B, or any of these other ones.
I got one of those, too.
"In that area for which such license holds a valid sidewalk cafe." And it even specifies that the holder of that permit cannot allow people to drink outside of the area defined in the permit.
Yeah.
That is designed for exactly what you would think it would be, you know, little restaurants, bistros, cafes, you know, to have the little tables and chairs sitting right outside the door. That is a wholly different thing, and it's very important that you not confuse these two things. That is a wholly different thing than getting a liquor license for a special event.
Understood. I just wanted to understand the paperwork, the cost differences by way of comparison, but I understand it's a very different operation.
That one I can't...
Do you happen to know the cost?
Yeah, see, that was going to say, you might have to talk to the comptroller's office.
Mayor Pressing?
I would like to say also that Brandon raised the issue of simplifying the paperwork, and what we're going to be doing is, if it has, if the special event has the sale of liquor involved, then the applicant needs to start at the mayor's office, and we will have them fill out the application for the special permit at the same time that they do the liquor license permit. And we also found that the Public Works Department was not getting all that information filled out, and that is important on the special permit application for our legal protection. So we will get it right away. Jolinda, my administrative assistant who knows this stuff, will get it right away to Public Works, and it will not delay anybody, but it will simplify the process, and we will notify all the bar owners, anybody who could get a T-1 license, that that will be the procedure. Start at the mayor's office, because that's where you get the liquor application.
Brandon?
My next question is about the $78 cost. Do we have the ability, if there is a charitable fundraiser event, to waive that cost? I mean, you know, could you decide?
It's not a T-2 liquor.
Ah, okay, so for example, I know, like, in your email, you were saying Bunny's holds fundraisers for some charitable cause, but it's not the charitable organization holding the fundraiser, it's Bunny's holding the fundraiser to raise money for a cause. And I guess I wonder, in those sorts of cases, to me, the $78 is a reasonable fee for lots of situations. If, you know, if you're having a huge event, $78 seems fair. We have to have some cost to administer the process, but if it's a charity kind of event, I wonder if we have the flexibility to waive the $78 if it's for revenue going to a charity? And is that something that we ever do, you know, do you have, as mayor, do you have the ability to do that sort of thing, or would we, is it something we'd have to stipulate and decide we wanted charitable events to be?
So what's the word, charitable events?
I mean, charitable events, in keeping with the state liquor code, we have a license for that. It's a T-2 license, so there's two ways you can have a temporary liquor license. There's, if you already are a licensed owner, like a restaurant, bar, whatever, and you want to do something in the area immediately adjacent to your licensed property, you can have the T-1. If you are having a civic or charitable event, then you would get a T-2. I don't know if I'm answering your question, but I'm saying we have provisions for charitable organizations. Is that your question?
And that could even be used by the Iron Post, by Bunny's, by anyone who is a Class A holder, who's a private for-profit business, but holding an event for charity?
If, parenthetically, it says next to the T-2, civic or charitable organization. Now, the way I read that is if you are a civic or charitable organization...
Organization.
And I'm not saying I have a problem with, you know, this body amending the code, but the way I read that is you have to be one of those types of organizations. Otherwise, we get into the issue of us policing whether or not it's actually a charitable event or not, and where's the money going and all that stuff. However, if you come and show me a 501(c)(3) certificate, or if I can look on the Secretary of State's website and see that you are a charitable organization, I don't have to police the other financial portion of it.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis.
I think we should allow the T-2 to truly be a license that is sought by a charitable organization or community, because I think that it's very possible that a tavern could say they're holding such a charitable event, but maybe only 10% of the proceeds might be donated to charity. I mean, this happens when you, when people solicit funds for you on the, you know, for various kinds of charity experiences. There's no guarantee that the entire amount is going to actually benefit the charity, so, and I think it's important that we realize that a special event is a special event, and special events do not happen on a weekly basis. And although we're increasing the number of special events that could be held at a tavern, we're doubling, or actually more than doubling, the amount, I think it's still important to realize that special events are special, they're not regular events, and they should be treated as such. And I don't have my email to you, Ron, here, but I did ask whether, isn't it even almost like more clear to state that, in the ordinance perhaps, that it's the fact that there is additional property that's adjacent but not the premise owner's property being involved to make this special event occur that is one of the stipulations for requiring the special event permit?
Well, in the language of the temporary liquor license, it specifically says, if I can just find the, "The written consent of the owner of the adjacent premises shall be attached to the application. The written consent shall be dated not more than 30 days prior to the application." So that, to me, strongly...
Covers that.
Strongly suggests that this is a situation where they are clearly moving off of the licensed property and onto a property adjacent to them but not owned by them.
Couldn't we just say that? Just say that, you know, this obviously, I mean, a special event which includes property not owned by the premise?
The...
Just make it so clear you can't possibly avoid it.
I'm sorry, can you say it again, please?
Couldn't we just make it so very clear that, instead of reading into the language that because you're asking for permission from an adjoining property owner, can't we just say point-blank that one of the aspects of the special event is that the event is being held on property that is adjacent but not owned by the premises?
That's clear, because they're getting a T-1, but whatever. Mayor Pressing?
Go ahead.
Yeah. We require people who even own it to get a T-1 license, like the Holiday Inn wanted to expand...
Their own property.
Right, on their own property, so they had to get a T-1.
All right. All right.
Charlie, did I see your hand earlier?
Yeah. Real quickly, Ron, I assume that all of these ordinances somewhere, maybe in the special event or whatever, they all take into account that we have another ordinance that says you can't walk around town with an open container. That's an ordinance I remember being passed in the 90s, early 90s.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't have a light, if you're not within an area, because even the T-1 licenses and the T-2 require that you have the area that you are licensing, getting the permit enclosed. So if you walk outside of that area and you're just in the street or walking down the street and you've got a plastic solo cup full of beer, yeah, you could be...
So even though we don't specifically say here that, you know, by having the defined area, you're exempt from that. So in other words, really for the protection of individuals, it's important that a license exists so that they are exempt from the other ordinance.
Yes, you have to define, yes, because we're trying to control where alcohol is sold, consumed, possessed.
Except on July 4th.
Yeah. But if you, if you, if someone were to walk into a public parking lot and just have, and they're off of a licensed premises, it's one of our parking lots, and they have open alcohol consuming it, they could be cited. If that parking lot is enclosed and that person, a licensee, is, has gotten a T-1 to have them, and if met all the other requirements, no, that person would not be cited for that. So yes, that is correct.
Mayor Pressing?
I just wanted to say that it's not being exempt from it, it's really that it's a different situation. By having a special permit and the T-1 license, that's no longer just being out in the street. That's a special enclosed area.
Right, that's what I'm trying to bring out, the point.
Yeah, so it's not really exempt.
The license creates the situation where you're a different, you're in a distinct environment.
Right.
Can I say something?
Jim Kelly.
First, I'd like to address what the mayor said about how I administered the special event permit. I did administer it. It was my assigned duty. However, the permit, the special event permit was created, and this interpretation of T-1 was by committee and the earlier city attorney. So I don't go around and decide what the law is. That's one. The second thing is, is it's interesting that we, that Councilman Roberts mentioned how we're doubling what the T-1 license was to 13 instead of three, more than doubling. I still like to reiterate, prior interpretation, there wasn't any restrictions. We did follow the special event permit, which requires enclosed, which requires nobody outside that area, which requires not to serve on city right-of-way. And I would think, and I would hope, that the city would want one, it was interesting in your comments, but the city would want one every weekend.
Right.
So to put any type of restraints or costs to what was priorly interpreted by city staff to do that looks like we're trying to say, slow down, let's not have all these people here. Bunny's has brought thousands of people, thousands of people in that lot, not all at once, but that's what we've done, and we, and I think it's gotten out to the point that we're able to bring people when champagne has their street fest. So I think it's worked. I think it's worked well. The bottom line is another cost to the sponsor, whoever that may be, another hoop to jump through, another addition to already the special event permit, which has indemnification for injuries, city property damage, things like that. Special event permit is passed around to all the department heads. The mayor sees it. Everybody has input before that special event permit is approved ultimately by the Director of Public Works or his designee, which I was. So, I mean, all that kind of stuff was important to protect the city, and I wanted to, on the record, to say that's what we did, but the chief of police at that time, the city attorney at that time, and other people on that committee made the decisions of how that special event permit and what was required, not just me.
I'm going to recognize myself real quick, and that is to say that when we do a special event permit, we are, whoever that business is, is bringing, as Jim Kelly said, many people into the city of Urbana, and they might leave that special event and go to put gas in their car, they might stay in a hotel, they might go to a restaurant and have a sit-down dinner. My point in saying that is that a special event permit is good for the city in many ways. It brings taxes in that we might normally not get, and it's also saying that we're business-friendly to the business that is asking for that special use permit, and to limit how many special uses, how many special events they can have in a weekend, you know, or in a week, if Jim Kelly or, you know, the Rose Bowl, they wanted to have two special events in a week. I guess my point in saying that is that could be a lot of income essentially into the city of Urbana, and to limit that would say, ah, we really don't want these people coming into the city and spending their tax dollars in our city. And I think that we need to maybe reevaluate what we're saying to people when it comes to being business-friendly. Dennis?
Yeah, I think you point out some interesting things, and I can agree with you. It's great to have a crowd of people enjoying an event, you know, right downtown. I think, though, that if we call something a special event, it should be special, and if a business would like to have a special event two times a week, you know, as long as the weather holds out from March until, you know, mid-November, well, you know, it's really not a special event anymore, it's a business practice. And I think that what we might consider doing is form a new license for regular events held outside of the premises on a, you know, on a weekly level or a regular level, and there would just be a new license level or a new license created to cover and control, you know, a business or premise, a tavern or whatever, who would like to be using public space on a regular basis, and we should call it, you know, a regular event, you know, license perhaps. But I think that if you're going to have a special event license, it should be special. And if it's regular, if it's something, a regular business practice, and you have them scheduled one after another until the season's over, let's just admit it, it's a business practice. And so if you want to use the city property to do it, well, then there should be some way of doing it. I agree with that, but I think we should create that way of doing it, and we should define it separately.
David Garrick.
I guess on the issue of the number of special permits per year, I guess I have two questions, and maybe anyone here could help me with, is at a time when only three were available a year, were we exhausting those three every year? Were we, did we, were those actually being used? And we're now expanding them to 10, I'd say let's, before we talk about expanding anything any further than that, let's try it with 10 and see if, at the end of the year, there's still three or four left on the table, then there isn't any need to broaden the number beyond that.
Go ahead.
I can't speak to every licensee downtown, but yes, Bunny's clearly was exhausting their three, because it wasn't being enforced. This section, this T-1 license, was not being required. The other thing that I want you to consider in your calculus of this issue is the liability issues that are attendant to having people consume alcohol on city property. One of the reasons that you would normally charge to give a special event permit and a special liquor license is that the city pays for coverage. Traveler St. Paul is our insurance carrier, and obviously, our policies fill binders this large, but you have to consider in weighing the risks of allowing a piece of public property to be used for this type of activity every single weekend versus keeping it, allowing it, but keeping it limited. It's on a risk continuum, you know, a switch is not on or off, it's like the more you do something, the more risk you take. So you say, well, we want to take some risk, so we're going to allow some. I don't know what that number is. The one that we batted around when we met with Jim was 10. Maybe doing unlimited ones every single weekend of the year now would jack up our responsibility as a city in how we maintain that parking lot. Now we have a duty to ensure that the parking lot is safe for the purposes for which it's being used, not just parked in cars, but having large crowds of people. And maybe you want to undertake that, but I'm saying you got to think about that when you think about, you know, what you're going to allow on city property or not.
Go ahead, Brandon, then Charlie.
Yeah, I'm one of those people who wants something happening in downtown, multiple things, every weekend. I want it to be lively. I want to continue revitalizing downtown, so to me, you know, striking the limit of 10 and 2 is okay. Why have a limit? I think we want more activities, and if there's ever too many, we can always start turning them down. I mean, we have discretion to be able to say no to an event if it... I mean, we have discretion to be able to say no to an event if it conflicts, or we don't have the staff, or we need that street or that parking lot for something else, we can turn it down for those reasons. I like more happening, and I'm not worried, if it becomes an every weekend thing, I guess to me, the name of whether you call it a special event or just an ongoing business practice matters less, but we want to encourage that kind of thing to happen in our downtown. And I'd love it if we got that much activity.
Then I would normally, excuse me, I would normally suggest then that we work out, if that is the will of the council to do something like that, then we work out some sort of leasing contractual agreement so that we make sure that we are named as an additional insured in whatever insurance that we're going to require of the person leasing the property.
Charlie?
My drab shop already covers 500 feet from my building.
And then names the city of Urbana.
Correct.
On the property and the drab. So, all year long?
Yeah, because, I mean, that's what's required from my insurance company. I mean, you want to talk about covering yourself, try serving people every day on that property. So, I know what it takes to cover yourself, and then I'm covered 500 feet all the way around that building every day of the year.
Charlie?
Okay, a couple of things that come to mind, though, okay, I'll remind us that I think Ron has raised a really good issue, which is when we wanted to try to use the parking deck on a regular basis, we looked at a leasing arrangement for that for much of the same reasons that Ron's raised, you know, insurance coverage and so on. It fell apart because we, structurally, the building wasn't capable of doing what we, or the parking deck wasn't capable of doing what we wanted it to do in those, you know, non-parking times when it could have been used. So, I think that's a really valid point. The cost here really is pretty minimal. If it's 500 people, that's about 15 cents a person for these events. And if that satisfies our insurance requirements, I think that's an important consideration here that needs to be brought in. Though, at the same time, like others here, I want to see it lively downtown, I think it's important sidewalks and the sidewalk cafes, I think, are extremely important for that to happen. I'm not sure that the neighbors would welcome a loud noisy party every weekend, though. And I think that's why you do want some kind of a limit and, you know, spread it out around in terms of locations and so on. So, I'm not sure that the people who live immediately adjacent to Bunnies, or if they were to come along, would want to know that every week for, you know, 30 weeks out of the year, there's going to be a party below their window or noise that they'll reach. I mean, the last event that Jim had, I could hear from my house, so, you know, sometimes those travel a long ways for, with earplugs, is what I've had to do for many of these events. So, you know, so, you know, so I think some kind of a limit is probably appropriate.
Mayor Pressley?
Yeah, I think you, not only the neighbors in terms of sound, but other businesses are affected when the parking lot is filled. And I agree, is that David Garrick? I agree with what David Garrick said, that we're raising it from three to 10, and I think we should try it with 10, and we'll see what we have. But I think Charlie's point is correct. People are concerned about this, and we're trying to find a balance between what Mr. Kelly would like to do and what we would like to do in terms of livening up the downtown, but also, we want people to live in the downtown because that's our new urban model. So, we have to have a good balance, so that's the reason I suggested 10.
Go ahead, Robert.
One question. Is there a risk management study ever been done on items like this?
A risk management study with what parameters, on what particular issue?
Liquor licenses within a city and the liabilities associated with it?
Well, most recently, we've been looking at it in terms of allowing wine vendors from Illinois who are wine producers sell across the street, or across the street, at farmer's market. Because wine production has grown in the state of Illinois, and we have several wineries now, some representatives would like to have, allow certain tastings. So, we met with Traveler St. Paul and had certain discussions with regard to that narrow issue, and then they recommended that we raise some of our coverages for that very reason.
So, who gets the license there?
I'm sorry?
Who gets the license there?
The license for what?
To sell the wine.
It would be the representative who's coming. They would have to go through the state of Illinois, and the state of Illinois allows them to get a license. They have to name every date that they're going to do it, and they're limited to 10 or 15 dates at a time.
What about the city license?
We don't have to have a license. I mean, license to do what? We're not selling alcohol. It's a representative of the wineries who's coming and doing tastings, wine tastings. So-
So, I got it made. I can have a wine tasting in a lot, too, and I won't need a license.
Jimmy, don't make me tell you what I'm really thinking.
You're on camera.
There's a limitation as to, with tastings, most ordinances that control it limit it to, you know, you're really getting a sample amount. So, if you want to get some Dixie cups out and give, you know-
Make two bucks a pop, I'm ready. Let's go.
Right. So-
Mayor Pressley?
We are discussing a city license for that.
Yes.
So, it's, you have to have a state license, but we're also talking about-
Yes, we are.
-the city license, and we're moving forward, we're trying to look at all the aspects of it.
Again, I'm going to recognize myself. Jim, how many, what's the maximum number that you've had in one year, special events?
Eight, probably.
Eight, okay. And is that separate from like a special event, not a special event, but a fundraiser?
Well, I mean, the technicality of that is, is the people that have the fundraiser come there and expect us to provide.
Right.
Whether it's food, well, it is, food and alcohol. So, I mean, when they go out and throw bean bags out in the parking lot or whatever else, they're going to walk out there with a plastic glass with a beer in it.
Right.
So, until the reinterpretation, or I shouldn't say reinterpretation, the changes, I think, which, I mean, is clear, it's obvious that the T1 liquor license was confusing or did not state exactly that you shouldn't consume, okay? Because that's why you're changing it. So, I mean, that's why the language is being changed to clarify that, what Ron said, so that it means consume, too. So, I mean, that's okay with me, that's fine. However, again, I think that the city of Urbana doesn't want to put obstacles in the way of businesses, which this is what we perceive that. It'll be from the sponsor being able to have a event outside their establishment and have no charge and no limitations on it, as far as how many they can have, to a charge and limitations. Now, as we said in the meeting with the mayor, 10 a year, I mean, that's probably a good number. I mean, I don't think, you know, I'm very concerned about the residents near Bunnies, and that's why we shut down at 11. I mean, my cafe permit goes to one, you know? But, I mean, we don't want to make enemies. We're just trying to bring people downtown and trying to have, and trying to have a good business, and I think we've succeeded in that.
Well, and I heard the comment that it deters from other businesses. I'll tell you, on a Saturday night, when you have had a special event, there's, I go to the Courier with my father when he's in town almost every chance that I get. And whether you're having a special event or not, there's still the same amount of people, maybe more at the Courier Cafe than, you know, than not. So, to say that it deters from other businesses is not a valid argument.
And it doesn't restrict, and we want, another thing, the special event, what you commented on there was, was the restriction of the other businesses. It doesn't, and the special event permit makes sure of that, too. You cannot restrict other driveways into houses or a block party or anything. You can't do that. And the chief, under the special event permit, the chief has the ability, and has used that ability before in certain areas, to say, sorry, you can't have the special event permit. So, really, the restriction's already there. I mean, if Bunnies Tavern had the police called because of fights every time, which we've never had, but if they would have the police, Chief Bealy would be able to say, sorry, you can't have a special event permit, you can't have your party.
Okay. Mayor Pressley?
Yeah, I would just like to say, the reason I made that statement about other businesses is based on a phone call from another business.
Dennis?
We're discussing. Maybe there should be a motion, I don't know. I guess, you know, another way of wondering what to do in this situation and how it relates to general practice would be to ask how champagne or peoria or Decatur issue special event permits and what their parameters are. I don't know if we've ever had, you know, a lot of times when we don't quite know how we feel about something, we compare it with what other practices are done in other communities. And so, I'm just wondering if, before we decide this, do we want to get some data and do some comparisons, or, you know, it's just an option.
Mayor Pressley?
I would hope that you would pass this tonight, and if you want to change it, do other studies. One of the reasons we're doing this is because Mr. Kelly has an event scheduled, and I put a special committee of the whole meeting for tonight so that we could meet his timeline.
Okay.
Should we have a question, council? Do you have a question?
No.
Well, this would be the alumni, or this would be the Urbana High School event on the 8th you're talking about? That's what that is, there's, I mean, there's no music to that or anything like that, I would not jump-
Well, how, we're in committee of the whole.
Right, and then it will go to the next council.
Right?
I've got a question.
And so, if something's on the 8th, that would be the 10th.
That would be the 17th.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is Bunnies Tavern the only business that this affects? Is the reason why we're having this giant conversation with Bunnies Tavern is because they're the only people that are involved in this T1 liquor license? Okay, all right.
They're the only people that did what?
Complained about.
What did I complain about?
Are you actually saying that I came to you and said, please charge me and please tell me I can only have so many? Come on.
Okay.
You got into it because you-
First I heard of this was the letter from you that said I could not have that without a T1.
And we met with you at Ruby Plaza and tried to accommodate you.
So, the T1 works for most people but one, is that correct? We don't know that for sure.
It should, I mean, I have everything in place and everybody else, so. And Mr. Kelly has said that he doesn't think that money's an issue, and I don't think that just a one-stop, nobody's had to stop any more places, and I have to go to all of theirs, and now he'll go to the mayor's office, so there's no additional work.
Robert Lewis?
I make a motion that we move this to the first council meeting for approval.
There's been a motion by Robert and a second by David. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed. The motion carries, we'll see this at our next council meeting. So, we don't have anything on the 10th?
We didn't have enough business, and a lot of people are gone, so that was canceled. That was the regular committee meeting, not the council meeting. No.
There's no total business, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.